Okay, we're gonna get started. We've had our five-minute grace period. So we're going to get started. First thing, I'd like to say thank everyone for coming out. Thank everybody for coming out and taking the time out of their busy schedule to come out to this town hall meeting. As I stated before, town hall meetings are here for you to ask questions, for you to talk about things that interest you about the village, about what's going on in the village, hopefully to network and talk to your residents, your neighbors. Together, you may find some things out, you network sometimes, someone may have some information that you may be looking for. And then also to find out and not have a time limit on what's going on in the village. That's what these are all about. Before we get started with the questions and asking you guys what it is that you, what questions you have, I just have a few comments and statements that I just wanted to put to rest. And by that, I just wanted to, not necessarily say go on the record, but just state, so you can say, or someone can say, "Well, we heard," or "This is from, this is from me, so you heard it from me." Some things people were saying about this room here, I've had these meetings for almost two years, it'll be two years in May that I've had the town hall meetings, each and every, I think it's only one time that I canceled the town hall meetings in two years. And we started at the school and we ended up here because, to tell the truth, for me, they did it for us, the school district, but we, the taxing body, and I'm a trustee of the village, and it would be more appropriate to have it where I'm a trustee rather than have the school be there. They were more than welcome, they were more than happy to have us there, but I thought it was more appropriate to have it here in the village hall because this is where I'm an elected official at. And I did acknowledge superintendent and told her I really appreciate it, but, and she was getting some heat about us having it there too, so we moved it and we put it here, and it's been here ever since. Now, I don't know what better word to say, but it's been, they've tried to deter these meetings from happening, for whatever they can do, and I mean they, I'm sorry, I won't say they, I'll say the mayor, because the mayor's the one that actually changed the locks on the doors to keep and not have this meeting. I was told that we should meet in the hallway, or we can meet wherever, but not in here. And I asked that question, why we cannot meet in here? And it was told to me that the rotunda is used for special meetings. Well, the taxpayers pay for this rotunda, they pay for these lights, they pay for everything in this village hall. Why do we have to meet in the hallway? Plus, I don't have access to chairs in the senior center, so what, we gonna stand up in the hallway? So, I didn't feel that it was proper. I was told that I was using my authority as a trustee to bully my way in here. No, I wasn't. I was asking that we could have the meetings here, because I think this is an appropriate place. That's the first thing. Now, the doors are staying open, they changed the locks, but they left the doors open, so I appreciate that part, just want to go on record stating, I appreciate that, rather than for me to go and take other steps trying to get in here. So I appreciate that they did that. The second thing, I was accused of having political meetings, that our meetings were political. Most of the people that are here know that that's not true. However, if they have a complaint about the mayor, that's not a political, that's a complaint about the mayor, simple. If you have complaints about the president, have complaints about any elected official, no one got in by 100%. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna criticize. We can't take it, then we in the wrong position, because no one is perfect. So therefore, you know, you have to take the good with the bad, there's nothing that if you're a part of that is always going to be good, there's always gonna be bad, there's always gonna be somebody saying that they don't like this. Okay, what you try to do, what I would try to do as a human being, note it, try to change it, because good criticism is exactly what it is, constructive criticism. You know, we don't have to talk about one another, and I don't condone us using foul language, calling people out, and something like that, no, I don't condone that. But constructive criticism is exactly what it is, constructive criticism. So with that said, I'm gonna move on. Also, I did ask to have the marquee message put up there for the town hall, I gave them that back in February, I'm sorry, back in Friday, and for some strange reason, they put the message for the school, for this committee meeting, which since I've been trustee, has never been up on the marquee, but I think once or twice, and that was way, way back in 2007 or 2008. So, but we prevailed, and the meetings are gonna go on, because you, the people, the residents here, have questions, and we're gonna try our best to answer them. Before we go any further, I just wanted to acknowledge a person I haven't seen since, wow, it's been probably since Rickover, and that's Pastor Pitts. Pastor Pitts is right there. If everyone doesn't know who he is, Pastor Pitts is the pastor right across the street, the church is right across from Rickover. So he's the pastor, he's a community-oriented person, his congregation is made up of residents, and he has his ear to the ground, people ask him questions, and he knows what goes on here in the village. He doesn't come out a lot, because he does have Bible study on Wednesday or some kind of, but I really appreciate him being here, and you know, maybe he can, he can see exactly what's going on, because he doesn't have a chance to, he has a full-time job, so he doesn't have a chance to come to the board meetings, a lot of people are like that, they have, they have full-time jobs and then they do other things, so they don't have a chance to come, so this is where they come, to find out what's going on, to ask questions, what's happening, and to learn, maybe to get involved or to give suggestions, what we can and cannot do. I do have the annual financial report that we, that we talked about yesterday, I'm gonna kinda go over that towards the end. We did get the auditors' report, there were some recommendations there, but yes, we're still in the red, so. We still, we still have a lot of money that we still owe, but that's not, you know, that's all villagers operate, I won't say that. A lot of villages operate in the red, I won't say all, because there are some villages that actually have lending institutions, you could actually borrow money from the village, yes, there's some of them that do that. So, but they've put money away over the years and were able to do that, so. So anyway, without further ado, I will start taking questions, comments, suggestions. We do have, I do have a mic, so everybody can hear you, so who wants to be first?
Um, I have a question.
Might as well get the mic, because you know.
What happened to U.S. Investigations? Are they still here? Do you know if they've ever paid anything to the village, and how much? Because despite the fact that there's questions, you know, well, they're not costing a lot to be here, they're using internet, unless they have their own, they're using electricity, they're using water, so, any idea what's going on with that?
Okay, to give a background, U.S. Investigations is a, they were here to do the concealed carry classes, that's what they originally came here for. And that's the business that they were in at the time, there are other businesses, but they came here and got the space here, so they can do concealed carry, and on Saturdays they had the classes. But they were signing up people for concealed carry, that's what the original idea for them to use that space. How much they pay each and every month? Zero. They would, we would get money if they sold or had classes or someone signed up an application, we would get part of that money, from what they would, what they would do as far as signing people up. We did receive one check, and I'm not sure if they're, because I'm not gonna speculate, but I do know we received one check in the very beginning, since when they first came in. I haven't seen them in about a month now. I used to see them every time I come up here, every now and then, at least they would come up here twice a week, I haven't seen them in about a month. So whether or not they're in that room, we don't have keys to that room, we used to, because that used to be the trustees' room, but we don't have keys to it, so I haven't seen them here, I don't know if they're still here, I haven't seen them move anything else, I was just speculating that they're still here. But as far as how much money we're getting from them, on a monthly basis, there is no monthly rate.
I have an add-on to that, plus I have some questions. So, they, when they came here and they were the bug people, they checked the village out, the village hall out for bugs that didn't exist, but I think they put some in, that's my own thought. I have a problem with the fact that locks have been changed more than once, in the not too far past, they've been changed more than once. Yet, this group had access to everything in this building 24/7. They are not villagers, they do not pay taxes here, they don't pay rent here, but we've got trustees that are begging for a key, so that they can get into this building like everybody else that was voted in. I have a major problem with that. We voted each of these trustees in, just like the mayor was voted in. He has a key, every trustee should have a key. No individual trustee, because he's not liked or whatever the reasoning may be, should be denied the key. You've got people that are not trustees that have keys to get into this building, and I'm not gonna tell you who they are, but I know that they do, and I wouldn't say that if I didn't know. But I think it bears, every time we've asked about the U.S. Investigations, it's shoved under the carpet. Last night, the mayor said they don't have to answer questions. Well, that's just the kind of thing that creates this non-transparency, that creates the negative attitude of the people who ask a simple question and can't get a straight answer. If something's under litigation, or it's under investigation, or whatever they wanna call it, and they're not supposed to talk about it, we can understand that and accept it, but just to ignore us creates the negativity, and I think it's rather sad. It is my own personal feeling that the changes that came to Saw Village that are creating a lot of havoc did not occur until after the mayor lost his 5 to 1 trustee voting power. After that happened, everything changed. The committees now required a co-chair. Why? Why do you need a co-chair? He never had a co-chair. The trustees that he appointed that never had anything to do with the village were appointed by him, they didn't have to have a co-chair. Why all of a sudden do we have to have co-chairs? Then there was a financial committee appointed, and instantly, we now have a financial committee appointed, and instantly checks were established without the vote of the board, whether emergency or not. We have voiced this over and over and over, where's the accountability? Yes, you have to pay the payroll, yes, you have to pay some things, we understand that, we accept that, but when you write a check for somebody like U.S. Investigations, or Joe Smucatelli, there was a meeting last week, you could've brought this up to the trustees then, that next week, we, these are things that have to be paid, I need approval to pay them, but it's not done, it's done behind closed doors, it's done without the approval of the board. With the way things are going, and the money, and you can't get a straight answer, I would never, ever vote yes for accounts payable, when stuff has already been paid. And the auditors that were at the meeting last night indicated, and I don't know how anybody else took it, I took it, that asking you, or the trustee, or whoever, to vote to say, "I'm gonna pass accounts payable," and some of that money's already been spent, is not right. It should not be on there. Therefore, how did this money get pushed around? We have a right to know that, we have a right to accountability, we have a right to transparency, and we're not getting it. As I see it, all the things that Mayor Hanks fought, the previous mayor towers for, is now being put into place. I think it's sad, there's non-transparency, spending of money without approval of the board, not asking questions of the residents for non-apparent reasons, and when somebody wants to speak out and it's not within the liking of the mayor and his group of people, then we are the bad people. Well, these same people that are calling us bad people and pointing fingers were a part of fighting Mayor Towers. They fought him for the things that David is now doing. So how can you fight one person and say it's wrong to do this, but when somebody else gets in office, it's okay, let's, let's go, let's do it? It's not right. It's not right at all, and answers, I don't care, call me whatever you want to, I really don't care. It's not right. Our answers are shoved under the carpet because he doesn't wanna answer them, not because of legalities, not because of anything else, he doesn't wanna answer our questions. And I have a major problem with that. I know that I get up there and I ask, a lot of times, people get upset and say, "She asks the same question every time." I do that for a reason. We have multiple people videotaping, and I'm asking the question, and if it ever ends up that we find the answer to that question, I could say I asked exactly how many times, because I could look at the videos, and you wouldn't answer my question, but now I find that this is the answer, and I find you lied to us. Everybody has a cross to bear, everybody has to, when David ran for office, I said anybody that would run has to be sick, because they got a lot of cleanup to do, and it was bad. I'm not putting him down for that. What I'm putting him down for is totally disregarding what he ran for, what he said he was going to do. He was gonna hear the people, he was gonna work with the people, he's not working with The petition that he referred to last night, that had names crossed off of it, we had multiple people ask, telling us they wanted to sign, but they didn't want him to have their name. We, this thing did not go on for a year. I don't know where he got that, I don't know where his people got that. I will tell you, as the head of the plan group, that was my idea, and I put it into place. I contacted the other group, I worked with the other group, the plan group did, we met, we worked, we did our homework, it was not, it isn't a year now. It will not be a year until this June that we started it, but that's neither here nor there. If I knew that that was being put in place, I would try to find out, why? What is it? What can I do to change that? That was never done. If he knew it was out there, he knew who was doing it. Were we contacted? Were we asked? Was there any kind of meeting to say, "I understand, everybody's upset, what's going on, what can I do to change these things? Let's go over some of the issues?" No, no, it was not. We put it off numerous times for numerous reasons, and then enough was enough. It had to be put out there. Too many things were happening, too many people were complaining that they couldn't get their answers. And when you start messing with our money, and not being able to answer us as to what's going on and why that is going on, then, then you have to pay the consequences. And that vote of no confidence went into place. We're not done with it, we will continue, but I think the transparency, the changing of ordinances, the changing of things to his way of liking, the senior groups are all screwed up, the beautification committee doesn't have a head. David had to have an administrator and a public safety officer, because he's not a full-time mayor, and yet he's taken on more and more and more. It is my own personal feeling that if he was able to get rid of Jones from Parks and Recreation, he'd have taken that over too, and probably named his friend John Poskins to come in as an outsider and cherry. I don't know, but things are not done the way they should be done, in my estimation. Things are being done the way they've never been done in this village before, and I've been here for over 50 years. So that's it.
Okay, so for anyone that'd like to know, there is no time limit on how long someone can talk, this is not a board meeting, so it's not a three-minute time limit. These were the views of a private citizen, and I'm gonna try to go over some of these things that she stated, and wanted to know some questions or answers. The keys and the locks for this rotunda were changed because of this meeting, because of this gathering, that's the only thing they could've been, and that's what it was, and that's basically, because I asked the mayor about it, and that's basically why the locks were changed, so we could go somewhere else and meet. As far as the co-chairs for the committees, yes, that's something new, that started last year, right after the election. I guess he felt that he wanted to change things up, because ever since I've been a trustee, I was in charge of a committee, I didn't have a co-chair, and if we had anything that we wanted to bring before the board as a whole, we would do it at the board committee as a whole meeting, like we had last night. That's when we would bring up ideas, or, you know, state that we wanted to try to do this, or needed money from the village. But to have a co-chair, I don't understand, something that he came up with. The immediate checks that you asked about, that's something that is more prevalent now than ever. I do know that back in the day, sometimes when we had emergencies, they would call and ask, "Can we pay this, because this is due?" It was an emergency, but if it's an ongoing bill, that's not an emergency, because you know that bill comes every month, just like your rent, or your mortgage, or your phone bill, your light bill. We shouldn't have to write a check, an immediate check for that. We should budget that and have it done, taken care of, and not wait till the last minute, but, you know, that happened. And as far as accounts payable, I did ask the question yesterday to the auditors, that once an immediate check is written for an account, can it be put on accounts payable? Because accounts payable is exactly the way it says, what it says, accounts payable, to be paid, not already been paid. That's not accounts payable, and they agreed with me. So Judy, I just wanted to try to clear up some of those things, and as far as, I'm sorry, can I finish? As far as her own opinion, that's her opinion, just the way she feels, and basically, this is what this is here for, to express yourself. Okay, Joe, you gotta get the mic, who has the mic?
Bernice Brewer. I do. Bernice Brewer, Amisaw Village citizen for public awareness, okay? I came in late, but I did hear the end of Judy's comment relating to the no-confidence petition. Now, we joined up with the plan group, this is a citizen group that we planned, that we put together, and we are putting out 35 issues that we're concerned about. Now, only comment I wanna make on that is that the mayor has made it perfectly clear that he's coming after us. We have made it perfectly clear to him that we're not the board as a whole, we would do it at the board committee as a whole meeting like we had last night. That's when we would bring up ideas or, you know, state that we wanted to try to do this or needed money from the village. But to have a co-chair, I don't understand. Something that he came up with. The immediate checks that you asked about, that's something that is more prevalent now than ever. I do know that back in the day, sometimes when we had emergencies, they would call and ask, can we pay this because this is due? It was an emergency. But if it's an ongoing bill, that's not an emergency because you know that bill comes every month, just like your rent or your mortgage or your phone bill, your light bill. We shouldn't have to write an immediate check for that. We should budget that and have it done, taken care of, and not wait till the last minute. But, you know, that happened. And as far as accounts payable, I did ask the question yesterday to the auditors that once an immediate check is written for an account, can it be put on accounts payable? Because accounts payable is exactly what it says. What it says, accounts payable, to be paid, not already been paid. That's not accounts payable. And they agreed with me. So Judy, I just wanted to try to clear up some of those things. And as far as... I'm sorry, can I finish? As far as her own opinion, that's her opinion. Just the way she feels and basically this is what this is here for, to express yourself. Okay, Joe? You gotta get the mic. Who has the mic? Oh, I didn't, I saw it waiting in the back. Do you have the mic? Who has the mic?
I got a comment.
Who has the mic?
Hold on a minute. I do. Bernice Brewer, Amisov Village citizen. Bernice Brewer, Amisov Village citizen for public awareness. Okay? I came in late, but I did hear the end of Judy's comment relating to the no-confidence petition. Now, we joined up with the plan group, this is a citizen group that we planned, that we put together. And we are putting out 35 issues that we're concerned about. Now, only comment I want to make on that is that the mayor has made it perfectly clear that he's coming after us. We have made it perfectly clear to him that we're not gonna release the names of the people who signed the petition for their own safety because we don't want any kind of retaliation or anything like that. So the residents could be assured that we're not gonna release that information. I feel that it's a big disservice to us when we come in and ask you guys questions and we can't get any answers. This is a really waste of our time. And also, when we come to the podium, we're disrespected and can't get any answers about the money. So I want to say the mayor can bring it on. I live in Amisov Village. So I got the residents to back us up. So anytime he feel like he could go out and bribe a resident about something they feel strongly about, I say bring it on. He gonna admit it. But that's that comment. Second comment I want to make is last night, the auditor came in and said in April of 2015, we had $3.3 million in the water fund. It's 10 months later, we have less than $500,000. I would like to know what happened to the money, given the fact that we still have fire hydrants that's not working, water main breaks, infrastructure to repair, yet nobody knows where the money is and nobody can actually tell us where the money is. It's really ridiculous that we had $3.3 million in the water fund in April 2015 and it's less than $500,000 now and we don't have anything to show for? Where is the money? It's a little ridiculous. I would like analysis of what's been going on for the last year so somebody can tell us what's going on with our money. We paid for this money and we can't get any answers, it's ridiculous. And the last thing I want to talk about is that this issue of last night at the meeting, it was a big thing about residents walking around to the police chief. Yeah. Name me. But my thoughts is that if the mayor could sit up and disrespect trustees and residents, I should be able to ask him to be removed just like he has asked me a thousand times. Then he's gonna arrest me. So, I mean, we, I mean, tit for tat is a little thing, but we have to act professionally toward each other. But if you only give what, you know, only take what's given. So, you know, when it's wrong, do it as it's wrong to, but that's mine.
Okay. In regards to your question as far as what happened to the water fund money or whatever, as of April of 2015, there was 3.318 or $3.3 million in the water sewer fund. Between then and now, or eight months or whatever, nine, 10 months, only thing I can think of, and I tried to do the math too, that we borrowed 1.2 from the water fund, so that brought it down. And then also, you have obligations that you have to, you know, you pay your public works gets a certain percentage of the water in sewer fund. Now, what happened to the rest of it? It's a good question. I asked that question yesterday and never did get that answer. But I did ask, can we from now on, every time we transfer money out of the water fund? I'm not saying that's illegal because really, it's not illegal, but we should have, it should be voted out by the board as a whole, not by consensus. We have meetings for other things, you borrow that kind of money. If you didn't have that money to borrow, you'd have to go to the bank. And you would have to go before the board to borrow that money from the bank. We should treat it the same way. And also have a plan to pay that money back. You just don't keep borrowing because it's there. That money is there because we increased the water payments to $2. But that's why we have a balance. But that balance is not there just to use as you see fit and put it back as you see fit if you decide to put it back. Yes, we can, but we're glad to have it there to do that, so we don't have to go to the bank and pay an interest, but we should pay ourselves interest. This is a business. This village should be ran like a business. Not as a penny bank or a credit card, I'll pay you when I, you know, bare minimum. So yes, it should be noted. It should be documented that we took out X amount and we plan on paying it back when we get taxes or whatever, but not just have. I was shocked to find out we owe, or we had 1.2 million dollars we borrowed from the water fund, that's a lot of money, without any type of documentation. I do know that $300,000 was budgeted last year out of the budget that we would take $300,000 out, put it into the general fund, but that 1.2 mil and rising. And I haven't heard anything about how much we're gonna put back. So that's something that I've been trying to find out. Hopefully, I will stay on top of that, even though I'm not part of the finance committee anymore. I'm a trustee and basically if the money is not there, then we're at fault as trustees because we're the ones that are supposed to be monitoring the money. Thank you, Joe, with that. Oh, I thought you were, I'm sorry. The CNN, the CNN? The CNN Fund, Canadian Action? That's a noise mitigation fund.
I just want to say this in general. There are so many things going on with the finance. We are not understanding what's going on. We are paying the money, but yet nobody's telling us, I'm saying residents, what's going on with the money? You can't get a straight answer here. It's full of frustration. You come here every day, you want to know what's in the bank and you can't get a answer. So my question is to you, how can we go about getting some answers to some really questions that we need?
Being tenacious? I'm just saying, being tenacious, that's the only thing you can do. You keep asking the same question, soon as they're gonna get tired and they have to answer. But you have to be, you have to keep asking. Because the noise mitigation, they borrowed money for that because we had nowhere else to borrow money to pay things that we had to pay, that's why that was taken. It should have been, has it been put back yet? No. Well, MFT, we don't borrow from that. That's the motor field tax. We use that for the streets. There's no borrowing for that. As a matter of fact, we need to add to that from wherever we can get money so we can only, because right now, MFT does one block. How many blocks in Amisov Village? How long would it take for them to get to your street? If your street is disrepair and we do one street a year? So just do the math. So that money should either be, find a way to go out and get a grant or something to help out with the MFT. Because we won't be getting any CDBG grant money. This year, the governor is not releasing any, that's community development block grant. We won't be getting that. Right now, there's no balanced budget for the state of Illinois. He's cut out those type of programs. So we used to get that in conjunction with our MFT to help renovate and fix our streets. Now, all we get is motor field tax. And he just released that because that's been on hold for a while. Because as I stated before, there's no balanced budget. So we need to find ways to go, and that's what we should be doing. That's what the administration should be doing because the state is not, they're claiming they're not gonna pay because they're in a deadlock because they have problems down there. So then it's incumbent upon us, if you have a job, you have a family. And your job that you have is not enough for you to sustain your family, what do you do? You go out and get a second job. That's what we should be doing, going out, finding ways to subsidize, not just wait for this money to come and just operate that way. Go out and get some money. There's grants out there. You have to apply for them. That's why you hire competent, professional people to know where to go find the money. You get what you pay for. If you have a person that's there and they're working on a commission to bring you so much money in, just like selling your house. If the commission is high, he's gonna sell that house. Well, the commission, just like everything else, is gonna be sold just like everything else. You have to have an incentive. That's how you do business. Who was next? Okay.
Okay. Yesterday, there was some wild, crazy allegations about how trustees are being paid. And according to 65 ILCS 5, 3.1-50-5, it states that the salary or other compensation shall not be increased or diminished so as to take effect during the term of any office holder of an elected office. Now, what that means is going back to November of 2008, the salary ordinance for elected officials was passed. And it's required that this gets passed at least 180 days before new elected officers take over. And the reason they do that is because they don't want, you know, someone coming into office automatically just raising their salary. Or if they lost an election, decreasing it for the next step. So that's why the state law is very clear on this. Let's go forward to August 3rd of 2015. The village board voted on an ordinance amending Chapter 2 of the administration in the Amisov Village municipal code. It established, for, to keep it really simple, the standing committees which the village has. One of the things that it does allow is the mayor to appoint the chairman. But it doesn't say the mayor has the right to appoint a co-chair in the ordinance that was approved. It also states in this ordinance, under, I guess it would be Section 2, Paragraph F, that subcommittees shall not be compensated and shall only be advised. Now, it's always been the case where the members of the trustees committees have not been paid, so it's really reiterating the same thing. What the mayor is alleging is that you can only be compensated if you're a village trustee for a standing committee, and that is not true. The salary ordinance as passed in 2008 said that trustees get a payment of $125 for each meeting that they actually attend. And one additional meeting that they chair a committee. Doesn't say standing committee, doesn't say anything like that. So for the mayor to make those kind of allegations in a public meeting, I think is just, it's wrong. I mean, I think it's completely wrong. And in fact, in November of 2008, the same mayor who was a trustee back then wanted to make the position of mayor a full-time position. So, and he knew, he voted on the ordinance to approve it anyway, so it just, it doesn't make sense as to what he was trying to do yesterday. Now, in terms of the use of the village hall, let's go back to that. In October of 2008, during the transition from the old village hall to the new village hall, the matters were brought up to the board as to what the use of this exact room should be. And, you know, that topic came up during this particular meeting. And it said, among other things, Deer Creek Homeowners Association, Lions Club, Fire and Police Commission, and also, you know, basically, any of the committees of the village board that need to meet can meet in this room. So, I mean, there is established, you know, documentation that says that these are the permitted purposes of this room. And if this room, this rotunda, if this area where the public is to meet and hold free assembly, you know, that's one of our fundamental rights as Americans is our First Amendment, our right to assembly, our right to free speech. You may not agree with what I have to say. I may not agree with what you have to say. But that's our right. And I think that anything that limits our free speech is wrong. And I think, you know, by the actions of, you know, the village board, you know, sandbagging this ordinance on the public comment thing is wrong. I mean, the public has a right to address and criticize their elected officials if they so choose. So the public comment ordinance, three minutes, five minutes, that's, it is what it is. But to limit what they can say, and then if they say something you disagree with or something that you find, you know, objectionable, you know, that is a limitation on your free speech and I think it's wrong. So that's all I have to say about those items, and I'm sure I'll say one.
Okay, I just want to tell everybody, I just want to bring this up as far as trustees pay. And this is my opinion, but all you have to do is look at it yourself. I think that this village is very fortunate to have, even though, yes, I did run with them and everything like that, but to have two other trustees that ran this last election and didn't run for the money. It wasn't about money. It was about dedication, and that's what they did. Yes, it's political now with the money, you're trying to find a way to not get. I could care less because I don't pay my mortgage, rent, light bill and everything with what I get paid here. This is basically paid for by gas. So, and that's about it going around. But to do that, okay, fine. That's why I don't say much about it. Pastor, thanks a lot for coming out. And it's not about how much we can get paid, how much we're getting compensated for. The two other trustees don't even talk about, they have never said anything about, well, you know, you mess with, no, it's not about that. They ran, and you can call this political if you want, I really don't care, but they ran so they could better the village. Like I said, we were fortunate to have someone to do that, to better the village. Yes, they've been attacked ever since they've been in office. But they understand going in that that's the way of being a trustee, being an elected official, you're gonna get attacked. Did they get upset about it? I'm sure it hurt them a little bit or it kind of, you know, didn't take lightly to it. But they did retaliate. This is the direct retaliation when they tried, or when the mayor tried to augment the pay schedule. Like I stated before, I've never seen this since I've been a trustee since 2006. But that's the way it is. As far as the committees are concerned, all committees, that's what I'm saying, all committees are volunteer. We've had a trustee that actually fired somebody off their committee. How do you fire a volunteer? But it hasn't happened. So, but your village is only gonna be, and I say this over and over again, only gonna be as strong as your volunteers. Because a volunteer is not in it for the money, they're in it for the betterment of the whole or the betterment of the village. You can't put a price on that, like the commercial says, that's priceless. And to have someone on that committee and to have people to come out and be on the committee and ask questions, then you you push them aside, you don't answer, you talk, you just tell them to sit down or whatever, that's not how you do it. How hard is it to listen to somebody say something and they'll say, okay, and try, you try your best to answer. And if you don't, you say, okay, but at least you tried. But to have them sit down, have them escorted back to their seat because they talked a little bit longer. But then when they finish talking, you're gonna talk for 20 minutes about what they said. Is that right? No. So we have to look both ways. That glass, you can see both sides, that's why they call it transparency. But if you put a barrier up there, then I can say what I want and you can't, because I closed the door on you, but you got to listen to me because why? Because I have the last word, and that's not right. We, as I stated before, should be worried about the situation that we're in when it comes to finances. We should be worried about how much money we don't have. We should be worried about how much money we don't have, how much we're in debt, how do we get out of that, how do we bring it to at least a way that we can borrow money to better this village? We can't borrow money, or we can get it to a loan charter, if you want to pay that kind of price. But we cannot go out to a reputable financial institution and borrow the money we need. Everybody needs money, so you should call all, every, all municipalities need money, because they operate on a shoestring budget. But they have the availability to borrow, we can't do that. So, we have to deplete each and every fund that we have, until we get to the point that you have no more funds left, now where do you get the money? You have to have a plan, you have to have something that you can put in place to say, you follow this, you have to have a blueprint. And until you do that, you're going to have these problems. We don't, there's no money, we're losing residents each and every day. So therefore, your tax base is going down. Those are the things we should be talking about, and trying to find out how we can do that. They're talking about reopening up two new businesses, that's just like saying, I need windows in my house, because someone broke them out. Okay, if they broke the windows out, you gotta, you have to replace the windows. You have to, so that's not an asset, that's a necessity. So, if I took one business that left and put the same type of business in here, I'd just replace the same thing. Impress me and go out there and get a business that's going to bring thirty-five, forty jobs, that's going to bring money into this village, that's going to help the taxpayers. Impress me and go out here and try to find ways that you want to get people to move into this village and buy these homes. There's programs out there that if you come in and fix the home up, it's yours, but you have to create that, you have to have somebody to sit down and create that particular project, ordinance, rule, regulation, because we have a lot of abandoned homes. You know, we tear some down because they're irreplaceable, but others, we can, we can have it where if you, if you pay for it, the construction is yours. What's wrong with that? Those are the things that I want to see. Fifty-fifty program for your sidewalk. You have people that have sidewalks that are crumbling. Some of them are willing to pay fifty percent if the village pays the other fifty percent. Stop those type of programs, impress me and do that, not worry about who locked the doors. Worry about who says what, that I'm being talked about. That's not, that's not what this is about. You guys are taxpayers, you're residents, you don't want to come here, hear people whine and cry and, and put on a show. You want to come and find out, what are you going to do to lower my taxes, to increase my property value in the neighborhood that I brought, in the villages that I invested in, what you're going to do? That's what you ask your elected officials to do. Everything else, that's part of life. Who's next? Let me, is it nobody else? Oh, can I get her first? Are you going to be the guy walking around? Ms. Clark?
Jan Clark here. I just want, I didn't want to lean over and ask her, because I didn't think her answer would be beneficial to the rest of the people here, because I'm sure they want to know, okay? Why did you say that, that people were apprehensive for the mayor to know who signed that, that there would be repercussions? Was there something done or said that concerns me?
The way I understand it is that during the town hall meeting on Saturday, the mayor said that he was, he wanted to know the names of the six hundred and fifty-two people who signed the petition, because he wanted to talk to them directly. That sounds like intimidation to me. We, that's one reason why we blacked the names out, because we didn't want him to intimidate the people. You know, they, they're, they have their ideas, they want to stick to them, and they want anybody intimidating. And, I mean, he actually said this in Tuesday's hall meeting, he wanted to talk to the people. So, I think that's not, yeah, right. So, I don't think that was a good idea for an elected official to go down and say, well, you signed that, and whatever, and stuff like that. And I also asked him, and Ms. Zee asked him, if anything on the petition that he had questions about, that we will supply him supporting documents, because we get our information from them, and we can provide them with anything. Everything on there is true, we have supporting documents. Yet, the mayor sits up there, and he'll call us liars. Now, how, does that not seem a little strange to you? So, why would we give him names so he could probably resonate through the village? So, that's why, you know, so.
I have another question too, about that, the investigations that are, or were going on concerning the financial director, the treasurer. Is the FBI or whoever's doing this, multiple agencies, are they done? And is that about a month, about a month ago that they started, about the same time, maybe? I'm just pulling things out of the air here, that maybe US whoever uses the trustee room is not there anymore?
Yes, investigations have nothing to do with the Greco situation. They, no, they're not involved in that at all. FBI is, they still are, they're still compiling, I don't know if anybody here works for the FBI, they take a long time, so therefore, they're going to cross all their Ts and D's before they come out with anything. So, it's an ongoing investigation right now. We don't know anything, we don't know what's going, at least I don't know what's going on, only that it's still being investigated. But I do know the FBI have been here several times. What they got, I don't know, but I do know that it takes the FBI a little time. So, when they come out, because they're going to go all the way back to everything, just like, has anyone ever had their taxes altered? Okay, they go back, they ask you questions that you didn't even know you put on your taxes. And then when they ask you, what about this? So they can find a way to get you just paid more money, in just a fact, yes.
Okay. Is there a way to preempt a situation that may arise as to when they do complete their investigation? That the Board of Trustees is also made aware of the findings, rather than just the mayor and his advisor?
You're asking that when they completed their investigation, will the trustees be told? Only God knows, and he's not talking. Because there's no way, I could tell, they can tell you, you're the mayor, they can tell you to tell your board. But will the FBI have a meeting with all the board, or would they? You'll find that out in court, you'll probably find out the same time that they find out, when it goes to court. Now, if you want to be there when it happens in court, then you can find out. But I don't think they would come to the mayor and say, hey, this is what happened, because it's going to go to court, there's going to be a trial, you know, one way or the other. So, when they do those findings, it'll be, it'll be there. And, but won't necessarily be public, but believe me, somebody will know, they won't just come to the mayor and say, okay, this is what it is. Because they're trying, they're looking at every single thing. Anybody that had anything to do with his signature on there. So, they're looking at everything. So, who knows what they're going to uncover? So, as far as will they tell the mayor, and the mayor tells us, I don't even think it'll get to that point. I don't think it'll even get to that point. I just, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm just wondering, is anybody, anybody new have anything before we keep, you have, who has something new?
In relation to the investigation? I want to know, can they also investigate the board and the mayor?
Can who investigate? FBI, anybody that had anything to do with signing or anything to do with the finance, I'm sorry, with the treasurer, they're going to investigate. So, if my name happens to be on a check that was written to me, I'm sure they're going to ask questions. You know, what was that check for, whatever? So, it's going to, it's going to go, it's going to go pretty far, that's why it's going to take a minute. If you notice it, how long did it take for them to prosecute Bogolovich? Years, okay then. But when they did, they didn't have to go back. I'm just, I'm going to call us to Judy and run each show for this.
I just want to say, is that probably why the mayor was up there yesterday? He had to head down and the auditor said, the mayor has signed a check, he's trying to walk.
I don't know, I don't know what, I'm not speculating, but time will tell on everything, it's.
He's a liar. He lies, he lies, he lies.
I, I want to bring something up that's been bothering me for a long time. You come to these meetings on Tuesday, and every now and then you see new people that you've never seen before, and then you never see them again. And it's been said over and over, that we need to bury our negativity and start being positive. And I thought about that for a long time. What can we do so that both sides could start being positive instead of negative? And just about the time I thought I had an answer to that question, something else popped up. And I'm going to tell you about it, because it bothered me tremendously. I am an advocate of our police department, I always have been, I always will be. Are we perfect? Hell, no. Do we have things that need to be addressed? Always. But we were doing a good job at it. When some of the people that keep complaining about the negativity from us, they had one of their intergroup people write a letter, or wanted her to write a letter that would jeopardize the, at the time, the deputy chief. She didn't write that letter. Instead, she wrote a letter to the deputy chief, telling the deputy chief what they asked her to do, and the allegations against her, that this was an attempt to get her fired. I couldn't believe what I was reading, this was a notarized paper. This implicated multiple people, all the way from the top. And it bothered me tremendously that somebody could go that low to try to get rid of somebody, to ruin their life. Becky could retire, she's got enough years in, she's just not old enough. She's done a good job for this village, she has supported this village, she knows this village. I don't care what your personal feelings are, look at the job status. And she's done a good job. And yet, this again, this went around like wildfire, and all of a sudden, it was buried. Why is it that some negativity is acceptable and some is not? You're not going to get two sides to work together when you got one side burying negativity underneath the carpet, because it will show them to be what they are. I think everybody needs to keep their eyes and ears open. I think they need to continue to ask the questions that are not being answered. And I think that the mayor telling the trustees that they cannot answer our questions is wrong. We voted these people in, if I want to ask him a question, he should be able to answer that question, especially if it's his committee. And I resent the fact that Kevin Waller was told not to speak with us. We want to know something about the water department, who better to talk to than Kevin Waller? And yet, he's told not to talk to us. Again, more negativity, practice what you preach. You don't want the negativity, then quit giving it. There is no working together at this point because of that kind of behavior. I listened to a trustee last night talk ninety miles an hour about what she didn't like and all the things that happened to her. It was, you know, she went on and on and on and on and on and on and on about the same thing. Well, guess what? You ran for that office, you can't handle it, get out. She, she hands it out as well as she gets it. She doesn't like being called names, yet she acts like what she's called. And I'm referring to Bobbed Ed. How do you run for, for mayor and advertise that you're running for mayor, but talk about what a fantastic, great job the mayor is doing? Well, if he's doing such a great job, why are you running? Why are you running against him?
Okay, we're not going to get political.
Okay, I'm sorry. But I had to point out some of her, you know, craziness. That's it.
Is there, okay, Alan has something. We have, I'm just trying to, you know, I want to, instead of, you know, I understand that you guys come out, but I want people to, you know, everyone to have something to say. Yes, Alan?
Oh, yes, sir. I, I was just wondering, you guys passed the ordinance about the business license being increased because of the Cook County Health Inspection, correct?
It was voted on, and was voted on three-three-one.
Okay.
Because, no, I didn't vote for that, because I did not believe, and I stated at the minute, I'm sorry, at the meeting, that we shouldn't be increasing any licenses at this point in time. It's not like we got businesses on a waiting list to come in here and do business. You know, that little money that we increased for the businesses is not going to make or break this village. You only have twenty businesses out here, so if you increase the amount, what are you talking about, breaking an extra six, seven hundred dollars a year?
Okay, the only thing I was, Popeyes, okay? Our license was a hundred dollars, the past couple of years now, it's been four hundred and sixty dollars. We don't understand the increase as to why.
You're saying that it increased each and every year?
No, it was a hundred dollars, and then it went to four, three fifty, then it went to four sixty.
When did it go to three forty?
Three fifty was the year before this.
I, I, no.
It went to three fifty, twenty fifteen license that expires in April, we paid four hundred and sixty dollars, four hundred and sixty dollars a year for that license. When I first started, when I first started eight years ago, when I first started eight years ago, my license was only a hundred dollars, one hundred dollars, and I'm paying now four hundred and sixty dollars for a business license.
Okay, I'm going to find out tomorrow why, because I do know this last time they did increase, I was against that, but I didn't have the votes.
The increase, the increase was told.
I didn't know it went from one hundred to one hundred?
It was one hundred dollars to three fifty, to four sixty. I can understand why businesses are going out of this town.
Absolutely, I mean, I, that, I, okay, I, I should have known, I didn't know, didn't know that it went up like that. I will personally get back to you, because I'm going to find out tomorrow why and when did it go up to three fifty, I don't remember voting on that. I do remember this last one, but I don't remember the one before that, because I was against that. Like I stated before, it was three-three-one, I was against it, because, you know, all I wanted, all I wanted on that particular ordinance was to put the water in the owner's name of the house, that's all we wanted. Instead of having it into the resident, whoever the landlord is, whoever owns that particular house, that's all it was for, they added that. That wasn't part of the ordinance, that's why we voted it down, but we didn't have the votes. That's why it's important, when you put people in office, do your homework. But I will definitely find that out, I will give.
Yeah, because you were, you were saying something about the increase because of the health inspection. I understand the village pays.
That part is true. That part is true.
Yes.
But you have an existing health inspection. If we have to have the health department come out, it used to be seventy-five dollars a hundred. Yes, we passed, we passed that cost on because that's what they charge us, but not the business license.
Yeah.
And I just want you guys to, I was gonna say this, but Alan talked, now how many people patronize or support Popeyes here? Okay, that's who they are. They're the ones that run it. They are one of our mainstay, um, businesses here in the village. They work with us. I appreciate them coming out. But this is one of the reasons why I never like to go up or increase. A business license is there for a reason, and you, and the money that you pay for that license is not gonna make or break anybody. You know, to increase that, what does that do? It's not like, what are we giving you? What, what did you get for that? So, I'm just saying. But, I mean, I know it's costly to have the business, and it, it costs money to do business, but for one hundred, three hundred and fifty dollars in one year? And I'm just wondering about what, you know, what the other businesses are doing. Even though you guys are a corporation, I mean, we're a small town. You're fighting to try to get, keep people coming in here. It's not like you're on a main thoroughfare. They have to come into the village to see you. So therefore, your business demands and maintains on word of mouth. Uh-oh. Oh, okay.
Um, so I think he's talking about licenses. I just saw, noticed on the door that says stickers are sixty dollars this year?
No, right now stickers are sixty dollars. If, if it's, um, past due, which it is by this time.
It says July first. So is that for this year? Are they going up to sixty?
That should've been July first of two thousand fifteen.
I don't know, I just noticed that.
Yeah, July first, two thousand fifteen, they don't.
So that's from last year, it sounds.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we didn't raise the sticker price.
I'm telling you.
We didn't raise it. I won't say yet, but we didn't raise the sticker price.
Okay. And then I just wanted to say again with this emergency checks, as I said last time.
Immediate.
Immediate, emergency, whatever, there's no such thing. And the auditors kind of alluded to that yesterday.
Yes, they did, that's why I asked them, so.
Yeah, so you know what, uh, there's something really fishy there, is what I'm saying.
Okay. She's a resident, she has the right. Yes, ma'am, we, we gonna, we gonna get it to you because I have to go home today.
I pay half of those taxes, thank you. Uh, I was gonna agree with, uh, uh, the proprietor of Popeyes. When you're looking at the fee increases of their business license since twenty thirteen, is that, Mr.?
No, twenty fifteen.
No, he said from three fifty, from one hundred to three fifty, and from three fifty to four sixty. So that would go back to twenty thirteen, I would imagine?
I believe it was twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
Okay. May I ask that you look at all of the businesses to see what their fee increases are?
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, to tell him that you'll have him an answer by tomorrow may not be right because you wanna go and find out how much has he led all of these businesses?
I wanna see the ordinance that stated that that went up, that's, and it, that, that's, and that'll, that'll let me know if they went up everybody. I wanna see the ordinance that stated that it was an increase back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. I wanna see that ordinance. And I wanna see, because the ordinance is supposed to spell out.
Yes.
So I wanna see the ordinance.
The rate at which they were gonna increase?
This last one was only supposed to go a certain amount. How did you go from one hundred to three hundred?
Three fifty.
Okay, three fifty. How did you go from that? What, 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 what made that, you know, so that's what I wanna find out.
And then, when it increased, you wanna know what line item that increase went?
It goes under, it goes under, uh, it's, it's, it's in there, it's in our, um, um, budget, um, as far as revenue. It's in there for business licenses. It doesn't itemize each and every business, but it tells how much money we bring in for business licenses. So that, that, that part is in there.
Can you address that in Tuesday?
What you gonna be, you do.
Can you do it?
Yes, can I address what Tuesday?
Thanks, we had that question.
That's not, that's not on the agenda, so I can't address it.
Well, the next Tuesday.
I'm gonna address it, um, yes, the next Tuesday. And I probably will address it when it comes to miscellaneous for the trustees too. I can do it then. Yes.
Uh, my question refers back to Jan's question about the village treasure. It's, it's my understanding, my question refers back to Jan's question about the village treasure. Uh, it's my understanding that you guys can't talk about dedication, which I understand. However, I think it's unfair to keep the taxpayers, uh, responsible for paying this man's salary. He's a part-time employee. He doesn't have a contract, but yet we are on the hook for paying his salary for next two or three years. I think that's unfair. That's the only comment I wanna make, and it's up to the mayor to fire him. There is no reason to keep him on board. There's, he said there's an Illinois state statute that they have to follow procedures and all this sort of stuff. I asked the mayor for a copy. Nobody could give me a copy. I'd like to know what Illinois statute is he using to justify keeping this employee on board who's a self-confessed, uh, felon. So, anyway, that's my question. Next, next thing I want to ask about is that, according to the auditor yesterday, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was forgiven on the four point eight million dollar loan that Illinois EPA gave us. However, the mayor also said that the loan has been reduced down to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, uh, he said that he was gonna post that information on the website. I would still like to know where does he get this information from? And I'd like to know, see the supporting documents. It is not on the website. In addition to that, I'd like to know, what are we gonna do to improve this infrastructure? It's not getting any better as we go along. Now, the last comment I'm gonna make is that that we have so many problems here. We're talking about financial issues, environmental issue, racism, you know? Uh, people making up stuff, they go on, no transparency. But yet we sit up here disrespect, and yet we sit up here every Tuesday and try to get answers, and nobody wants to give us, give us any answer. I'm getting tired of people paying, spending my money, and I don't know what's going on. I get tired of the disrespect, you know, so, you know, you, uh, I'm not talking about you personally, but, you know, something got to give here. People are getting sick and tired of what's going on, and it's absolutely nothing. We are not moving in the right direction. We're not moving anywhere. We're not doing anything. We're just holding on. We're just holding on to get into that water fund money. Come on, we paying too much water fund if you guys can use for everything else what is intended to. We need somebody to help us out.
Okay, well, Bernice, as you know, we can go to all type of agencies, we can go to all type of people. You have the power to change things every two years, so that's what you have to do. So as far as the money is concerned, as far as the EPA, as far as the EPA loan is concerned, that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was given to us last year. So it didn't just happen. The rest of the money is waiting to come. When it happens, we'll, we'll know. I'm sure the reason why there's no paperwork is that it hasn't came to us yet. This was just told to us. And the figures that I was, that I found that the mayor even quoted was we're supposed to get a seventy percent forgiveness grant, which would be three point three five four million dollars. That's a grant, that's a forgiveness grant. When that happens, it'll be inserted, but until that time, we still have to pay. And then after that's taken care of, then we will owe a balance of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Which on that balance, we will pay approximately twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars per year versus a hundred and, what was it, a hundred and fifty-four thousand? So yes, if these days happen, but we have to wait. As I stated before, the state hasn't passed a budget yet.
So what's the plan for the infrastructure?
As far as the infrastructure improvements? I, I can, I can't tell you because I, I don't know. I've asked the same question. I think that we should, you know, if we're gonna continue to have that money and continue to keep the water rates to where they are, and we get a forgiveness loan, and we get a grant, then that money should be earmarked for certain things, not just put back into the water fund where as we see fit, we can use it. At some point in time, we have to stop doing that. We can't just operate on that because we have, first of all, we have to have a plan, as I stated before, to pay that money back. That's the first thing. You just keep taking money out, and what happens when you delete that? Where do you go? To another, to another, um, source, sooner or later, around sources. Now, what are you gonna do? Really gonna be in trouble. Now you want me to pay payroll? You out there in the street trying to collect money on the, to pay payroll?
You don't think we in trouble now?
Yes, I said that. We don't have any money. We don't have any money. Don't let no one tell you any different. Yes, we're in dire straits, but we're, we're, all the other villages are the same way. But you have to plan because we do have a dry period between the second installment of taxes and the first installment. Every year, we run to the same thing. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to plan for that and quit spending and quit using and just hold off until you do build up a surplus, as I stated before. What do you do? When you have your, your house, or you have your family, you don't make enough money, you go out and get a second job. Well, we gotta hire somebody to go out there and find some money for us. You pay, you get what you pay for. Um, yes, sir.
Uh, yeah.
Did you give anybody, please? Oh.
I got a question for you. I think I've known you. I think I've been knowing you longer than anybody here except your wife. And I got a question for you because sometimes people look at you and think that Derek is the type of person that hates to go on like, but I ask you a question. Very straightforward question. Tuesday night, when I stood up at the mic and I said that I think the meeting should start at seven o'clock, and at nine o'clock, we should be out here. What did you say?
Good luck.
Huh?
Good luck.
That's not what you said.
What did I say?
You said that's a good idea.
No, I, I, no, I don't. See, you heard good. I said good luck. Now, I didn't say good idea. I said, your wife is sitting right there. I said good luck because it's not gonna happen. I mean, because how can you stop someone that's in the middle of doing what they're talking or whatever to say, oops, let's go? You can't do that, so. I mean, it's a nice idea, that's in a, in a utopianism. In other words, you have a perfect world, that would be nice. But when you're dealing with people, and people have their opinions, just like tonight, we have, you know, the people have their opinions. It'd be nice, and I saw somebody looking at, because someone was talking past three minutes. There's no three-minute rule here. So when someone has to say something, that's what life is about. I waited for, or I'm just saying the resident, I waited for two weeks to get up and say something. Then I've been at home, sitting around, trying to bring these questions to the village and ask these questions, and I wanna know. I get there at that podium and sit there and start talking, and I can't formulate it in three minutes, and I go on a little bit, now I'm being escorted. You, you have to put in place that these people have waited for such a long time to ask this question that they feel, because it takes a lot. You've been there, I've been there, everybody here has been there for the very first time to walk up to that podium. Takes a lot to talk in front of other people. It takes a lot for them to express themselves, because a lot of times they apprehensive, they're nervous. They don't have the comfortability that I may have, or you may have, to ask these questions. They're trying to formulate. That takes a little time.
Well, my thing is this, is when I, what I, the statement I was trying to make to you or to make to everybody here. We always hear the question, where is the money going? Where is this going? Where is that going? When you turn around and you look at it, any kind of way you wanna shape it or do anything else, when that attorney's sitting up there. If this week was over within an hour, two hours, go home. That saves money. But, you was talking about the budget and everything else. Is there anything in the budget that you guys, you always wanna look at? Is there anything in the budget that says on any given night that a lawyer could stay here and cost seven hundred dollars? Now, that lawyer got to be paid. Is that in the budget?
The lawyer, and there's a budget for professional services. Um, I'm gonna say this, and it's just, it's the way I feel because I've been doing this for a while. If your lawyer is at your meeting, that's why we don't have him at the committee meeting anymore because we really don't need him. If your lawyer is at your board meeting, and you see it going on and on and on, after the first hour, because if I have a question for that lawyer, or if a resident stands up and has a question for that lawyer, if you notice in the board meetings that we have the second and fourth Tuesday, questions and public comments are at the beginning. That should be so. If the lawyer has a question, you can ask that question, or you have a question that may, the lawyer may have to ask you, and then once we get through with comments, we don't need him anymore. Because if we do need him, then there's tomorrow. Hey, we had a question at the board meeting. We'd like to get a clarification. But for him to sit there, that's the mayor's call. Bye. Thank you very much. You came out, you were here just in case, but after that, see you. Because they, I don't know if you've seen the bills, but on board meeting night, they get an average of four to five hours. Each and every board meeting night, because they get paid to come, they get paid to go, so the minimum they're gonna get is four hours. That happens. So to cut that down, one hour, and we'll pay you one hour travel, because you do have to pay travel. That's, that, that's business. So now I cut it down to two. I just did that.
Well, you know, that's what I'm saying. I mean, when we turn around and we look at it, just like it with me. I, I, I look at things this way. For an example, I mean, we have three sources of income. That's our taxes, and when we get this thing from, uh, I am, I live in this thing, it's up here, the temp, and we pay for the, uh, your, uh, taxes. Those are the only three incomes we have, right?
No, we have enterprise, we have water.
I said water. That's your income.
Water, water and sewer.
Sewer, sewer is not part of that.
Yes, it is.
You pay for your sewer yourself.
No, I mean, that's part of your income. We, 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 we get, we make, same thing we make on water is sewer too. Water and sewer, if you look at your bill, it's two separate things. Also, but you're trying to categorize it as one thing. Okay, water and sewer, taxes.
And, and the, uh.
The temp is administration.
Okay, fine, but that's just like a person renting, so they still have to pay us that. But my thing to you is this, other than those three things, where else are we gonna get money from? So when we take it, stand here for six or seven hours, and stand here talking, going with him, sitting up there wasting time, that's, to me, to me, it's just a waste of time. I mean, do the business. You don't need to be, to me, that's just me.
But Mr. Williams.
You could be here at seven o'clock, and you may be telling me we stay till eleven o'clock, and we don't get anything anymore done. That night, you could do it every night.
But Mr. Williams, you, you stated that, you know, where are we gonna get the money from?
Yeah.
Okay. You own, you have a business. The village is a business. You have to run it as a business, okay? You have a business. How do you enhance your business? You go out and get professionals that will come in and do advertisement, that will do whatever they have to do to try to make those people come into your business. The village has to do the same thing, but in the form of grants. If I went out and told you, Mr. Williams, that I was gonna give you ten percent of every dollar you bring to me, you would bust your butt trying to bring a grant in here that's a million dollars. Guess how much you'd get? One hundred thousand.
That's true.
So therefore, you're gonna work to make that happen. That's what we have to do as a business. You surround yourself with professionals that are gonna bring money back into this village. Because you're right, we only have a certain amount of income that we could generate from the people that we have here. So you cannot just say, well, you know, we're just gonna, this is all we're gonna get because people are, you don't see a lot of people moving into our village. So therefore, our taxes are going down as far as how much we're getting in. Plus, their praise value is going down. Your house appraised for a lot less, which means you pay less tax for that. So you have to circumvent that by going out and getting professionals to come in and do, and, and, and you tell them what you want. If I'm coming to you and I say I want you to make it rain, and you said you can do it, I'm waiting on you to make it happen.
I would say.
Mic phone.
I would say this, with all the trustees we got. I would say this, with all the trustees we got, name me, uh, one or two of them that have brought a business into this village.
First of all.
Uh, no, no, no.
No, I'm, I'm asking, they've brought a business into the, I did, I brought a business in here. I was part of bringing the business in here.
Which one?
Windpack. The original Windpack. I was, I was involved in that. What's that mean? I was on that, you don't remember that? That was under who?
Collins.
Collins did not bring Windpack. Collins brought in DP Partners. No, it's not. Windpack is one, I'm, Mr. Williams, Windpack, I was part of that, because it was Lewis Towers, myself, and, um, Paisel. Ed Paisel, were on the board that went and had these meetings with Windpack. At that time, if you remember, they had a, the, um, what do you call it, grand opener, where they're in a tent, over there where DP Partners is at. Okay, I was on that board, went downtown to talk to them about that. So, I'm just, DP Partners was Mark Collins' drive. That part was brought in through, basically, Ed Paisel. And then it, it overlapped into, uh, Mark Collins, because they needed to drive that to him. But Ed Paisel started that long, long time. So, that part, but as far as going out, bringing businesses in, how, you have a house. Do you present your house a certain way before you go out and bring people in to look at your house and sell it? Or do you leave it the same way it is, and they come in and look at it however it is?
I do that, I get one going to sell it, I would repair it.
Thank you, so that's what you have to do to this village. You cannot bring businesses in here the way it looks in here. It just so happens, these guys here have been here for years, and we're glad to have them. Ask them now, what they come to Saw Village, under the circumstances that they see now. Ask these businesses that now, that are here, what they come out here and do business here in Saw Village. Until we take care of our house, can't go out there and ask nobody to do anything. Until we take care of what we have, you have to break your place presentable. So, as far as anybody going out here, bringing businesses in, they come in because of one thing. And the businesses that you give that are coming in here, they fly by night, you see what happens. They come in, they're gone, here today, gone tomorrow. How much income do we get off of them? Very little. How much we making off of Dunkin' Donuts? Very little. The only one that's probably paying anything worth anything might be Walgreens. And they're, and they're up, they can move at any time, because they don't own that building. They don't own their rent, their lease. So, it's, it's very, it's a very fine line, as far as who can go out and bring businesses in here. You don't want somebody to come, because once you divulge your location to a business that never been out here before, you're opening yourself up for somebody else to come in here, that's right down the street, and they are presentable, and they can say, "Come on down here. I got this for you." And you don't have to be in Saw Village, because they look at our statistics and find out what, what's happening here. You know, when was the last time you seen an influx of people move into Saw Village?
Well, I mean, right now, the restaurant giving it open up up there.
That's, I, I talked about that earlier. That's the same thing as saying, "My windows got busted out." And I named new windows. So I'm gonna replace the windows that I have with better windows, but they're still windows. They're gonna replace this restaurant with the restaurant that was there, but it's still a restaurant. It's still a restaurant. How is that going to have a great impact on the village? Yeah, you're gonna spend a little money, but that won't even, I can't even hire one person on the money I'm gonna make off of that restaurant. Now, you impress me and bring Kmart, Walmart, or Sears, or somebody else out here, now you impress me, yes. Now, I open up jobs, I got revenue, I got other things that I can piggyback off of, because they have what they call coattails. They don't have coattails. So, I mean, it looks good, but it's not something that you can base your village income or anything on, you can't do that. It's another business that replaced the business that was there, just like I said about the windows. The windows you have to have. This business here, okay, fine, he's gonna make some money, but he ran the other guy out. So, with that, he ran the other guy out.
Well, I, I, like I said, I don't wanna do all the talking, but what I'm trying to say is this, we can sit here pointing fingers.
I'm not pointing fingers, I'm, I'm stating facts.
But I'm saying, what I'm looking at is this, I mean, I'm just saying, for an example, if you take the restaurant coming in here, if we don't support that restaurant, you can't stay here.
I just made that comment about Popeyes. I just. Can everyone hear Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
So.
Um.
That's what I'm saying, we have to support.
Yes, we do, and you're, you're right. We, that's it, that, you came in a little late. We talked about this at seven o'clock, that we should support our own. So, that's something that we talked about, is that correct?
Yes.
And we, and we, and we even asked, you know, we should support our own, take care of that first. And that's what, that's, that's how they survive. So we did talk about that.
Okay.
I have a question for Ellen.
Good time.
Uh, I had an open board meeting, uh, a few weeks back. It was brought up that there was a confrontation between a trustee and your business. And it was said at that point, that the mayor was going to talk with the two of you together, was that resolved?
No. We have not, we have not heard anything from any of us.
Oh.
Was it that same trustee that was talking last night, saying how people were rude and stuff?
No, that's the only question I had for Ellen, uh, on that. And, and, and as far as businesses go, uh, Mr. Burgess, uh, I'm gonna put you on the spot. I, not all trustees can, can go out there and bring businesses in. But did you not attempt to bring in a business in within the last few months, and you were turned out?
I attempted to bring a business in about three months ago, and I brought the business owner in to talk to the mayor. The mayor, uh, told the guy that he would talk to him, and that he would get back with him. And, uh, it didn't happen, so then I contacted the mayor again, and he said he was still waiting on the guy to call, the guy called. And, uh, the mayor basically told him that there was no license for what he wanted to do, and so, this guy went somewhere else and opened up. He went to, basically, he went to Steger and opened up. And, uh, you know, that's what happened with that, and. He was gonna have a, it was a, um, I cannot, but is anyone familiar with, it's Steger called Bambino's? There's a, okay, it was gonna be something on that, on that scale, but there's one right down the street called, uh, I forgot the name, Party, uh, uh, something, but it was that type, it was that particular business. They opened up right down the street from Bambino's. And, um, it's basically, they, in order for you to do that, you have to have a beer and wine license. Not hard liquor, but beer and wine, because that's what the gaming wants. Go figure. But, um, and then he had five machines they were gonna bring in. Basically, with North, I mean, with a hometown G-Rod, they have five machines, but they serve food and everything, plus they have beer and wine. So, basically, that's what he wanted to bring in. I mean, that's all they, they wanted to come in at the time, and it was, I think, I'll put it this way, we make, they make pretty good money. We get a certain percentage. Now, when we have all three at one time, we got a few grand from them every two months. Now, it's just one, I don't know what hometown G-Rod's gonna bring in, or give it to the village, but it's a certain percentage. So, and they, and they had a place that they wanted to open it up at, had everything, just had to get the beer and wine license from the village. Yes, Madam Clerk, if it's something pertaining to this, find anything else, we like, because I don't let the trustees. Go ahead.
I'm not a voting member of the board, and it takes, we had to limit any comment.
No, no, I, I just don't want it to be something that's.
I thought this was open comment.
It is open.
Yeah, I'm not a voting member of the board, so the trustees, I'm not held by the same standards as the trustees. But, um, just having come in late, just picked up on a few things that were just said. Um, number one, the reason why the mayor couldn't handle the thing with Popeyes, is because the mayor cannot control the trustees. He made that clear at several board meetings, that was turned over to the vets. So, that has been turned over to some higher power than the mayor, because the mayor can't do anything about that, number one. Uh, number two, this public comment that's been going on for several months, um, I did a little research with some other municipalities, and I found out that majority of our nearby municipalities have a three-minute time limit. And some don't have any time limit at all, and a couple even went to five minutes. But the thing is, I think what's most important is how you approach the podium, how you speak to each other, how the board members speak to each other, how the residents speak to the board members, how the board members speak to the residents. If there's, I don't think there's ever a reason to have anybody escorted from the podium. I think public comment is important. I know for a fact, and I know this has been all over everywhere, when I went to the last school board meeting, and I asked for, before I even started speaking, I asked for an exception to go beyond three minutes, and I was told no. After my three minutes were up, I asked to go another minute, I was told no. Okay, so, it's not just this board, this is the way that we try to keep decorum at meetings. And I think if we approach the podium, we should be able to get our, our, what we have to say out in three minutes. Sometimes it does take longer, and I think if the board were agreeable to, it, it's being stated the right way, then I think somebody would let them go beyond three minutes. I hope the public comment ordinance will get passed next week. And also, I'm very concerned, because I understand that we have issues with money. With money. I understand that, we all understand that, we're broke, okay? I understand that it's a big bone of contention, how much money we're borrowing from the water fund, or how much money we borrow from the CN Fund. As I sit there and listen to these meetings go on and on and on, and how I hear about how we're, we're stealing money, we're borrowing money, I wanna know what the alternatives are. We've got a budget coming up, and the mayor and the trustees are all gonna have input. My question is, if we don't borrow money from the water fund, and we don't borrow money from the CN Fund, it just went out, and we don't borrow money from the CN Fund, what are the trustees and the mayor going to do for alternatives? Planning for the future, as you said, is fine, but if you can't pay your day-to-day bills, how can you put money aside? I'm really concerned about this next budget. I'm really concerned, as a person who signs checks for the village, this immediate check problem we're having, and this problem coming up with, uh, we don't have money, we have to borrow, and some of the trustees are totally against borrowing money. My question is, what is the alternative? I haven't heard alternatives. Today, we had to make payroll, okay? And in order to do that, we had to borrow money. Either we borrow money, or we don't pay our employees. What is the alternative?
Okay, um, as you stated, Madam Clerk, you were a little late, and I got twenty-some people. Did I, or did I not talk about what would happen, and what we would do about, um, not borrowing the money, or what we should do once we do borrow the money? Did we talk about that tonight? Okay.
Maybe you and I didn't talk in another love.
We, we, we talked about.
Okay.
And I'm just gonna try to give a quick summary, because we talked about this already. But there is not an, it's not a matter of an alternative. The fact remains that we keep borrowing money. What's the plan to pay it back? We have, you can only take so much money out of whatever account you take. Sooner or later, you're gonna deplete that account if you don't put money back in there.
But if you don't borrow the money, payroll doesn't get made. And payroll doesn't get made, where do you get the money from?
My question is, that when you get your money, and we're about to, we, we get X amount of money, the reason why that money is in the water fund is because people are paying two dollars extra. I'm not sorry, extra, they're paying two dollars to pay back a loan, that we're not paying back right now, so that money's sitting there. So, wow, I get to see that money, I get to use it. When are we gonna pay that money back? When are we gonna start paying that back, so we can have something down the line to borrow from? The reason why we borrow from CN, because we depleted the water fund. And the reason why, and, and the reason for that is because we're not putting anything back in. I've had plans, I've, in every budget, I've had alternatives, that what we should do, as far as how we should do our expenditures, and how we should do our budget. And every time it was voted down, the last time it was voted down, and they decided that they wanted to do it, and it was voted, the last budget was voted down, I'm sorry, the last budget was voted three, three, one. Because I felt that we were going in a wrong direction. I felt that we were getting to this point at this particular time, guess what? We're there. I had alternatives, I presented them to the board and to the mayor. The mayor spent the whole three hours going up and down everything that I presented to him, and stated that this is wrong, that's wrong, but we are here. So, as far as what alternatives, and what did I bring? I brought, I brought something for the last two budgets. I brought a packet. I brought showing each and everything, what we should do and how we should do it. I brought it for the last, every time it was, "We're not gonna do that, we can't do that." So, am I tired of doing that? Yes. This next budget that comes, we'll look at it, but if he has the votes to make it happen, it's gonna happen the way he wants it to happen.
Well, I, I don't have that in front of me, Trustee Burgess, but I know a lot of it was, you said what we should do, and we should plan for the future. And what I'm saying is, if I have to pay a fifty thousand dollar payroll today, and I don't have fifty thousand dollars to pay it with, where do I get fifty thousand dollars from if I don't borrow it from a fund?
Okay.
We have to make payroll, we have to pay the light bill. We have to pay the gas bill, but where do we get the money from?
But, those bills, you have a budget at home. Everybody does. Everybody has a family, has a, but we talked about this tonight too.
Yes.
Everybody has a budget at home. You know that every month, your mortgage is due, your light, your gas, your water, and your living expenses are due each and every month. You take a simple pencil, and you add up to what your insurance payments are, what your day-to-day expenses are, and you look at that, add that up versus how much money you got coming in. If there's a deficit, there's only two things you can do. Cut back on what you're doing, or get another job. With the village, it's not that easy to get another job. So what you have to do is either you have to cut expenses, or you go out there and hire somebody to go get you some money. You get what you pay for. If you have, everybody, I don't know if I want to say everybody, but most people know what headhunters used to do back in the day. You were paid them to find you a job, and then they get a certain percentage. And the more you give them, the better job you can find if you qualify. That's what they do. That's what professionals do, that's what you have to run your village on professionalism. You go and you get a person, you get what you pay for, you get a person to go out there and hunt for you, find that money. Believe me, if the finder's fee is high enough, they'll find it. They will find that money for you. Now, right now, money may be tight, but it's not impossible. There's money in places, we just may not know where to look, that's why you hire the professional. But in the meantime, you know your bills will come due. Then therefore, you don't go out there and change locks. You don't go out there and spend money on things that you don't have money for. So go ahead, and you know that at the end of the month, you don't have any tax money coming after you, hoping that you got something coming in, but you can't run a village on hope. You have to run it on what you have in your hand. And then in the meantime, once we get flush, once we have that money that comes in, pay that money back to who you borrowed it from. If you borrowed it from CN, pay it back. What's wrong? If you borrowed it from CN, you pay it back. If you borrowed it from the water fund, pay it back. Have a plan to pay it back. So when you don't have that money again, you can borrow it again.
That, that's what they do, Trustee Burgess.
I have not seen, I have, then why are we one point two million dollars? Why are we owed one point two million dollars to the water fund if they're paying it back?
Well, I guess, I guess your meeting's done anyway, I just wanted to have my.
I'm just saying, so therefore, until you can show me.
We, we would all love to have more money than.
Yes, we would. But in the meantime, you still have bills that come every month, they're not gonna stop, taxes and debt. That's, that's inevitable. You're gonna pay taxes as long as you're here, and you're gonna die sooner or later. So, those are the two things that are gonna happen, and I could say another one, but then I'd be saying, everybody say I'm racial, so I'm not gonna say that last one.
Looking over the, the audit report, you know, to say that the village is broke is an absolute lie. The village has over six million dollars coming into it, into the general fund. Over six million dollars, they're spending over six million.
Okay, so then they're broke. I mean, if you, if you got ten million coming in, you got eleven million going out, what you do with it?
The problem is, can. The problem is, cash management is very poor.
I didn't say that. I just say, but, but, but we are broke.
When, when, when the money comes in, the money goes out. You don't run a multi-million dollar business like that.
But you're taking money out of funds that are not designated for that reason.
Exactly.
Okay, so if your, if your general fund is supposed to support your day-to-day expenses, it shouldn't be that you have general fund and then you subsidize it with the water. Suppose we didn't have a water fund. Suppose we didn't have, suppose we didn't have a water fund where we had X amount of money, what you gonna do then?
I think, I think that's a good idea, protect you don't have a water fund.
But I'm just saying, what you gonna do? So, 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 it's just like, you're, you're, you're gonna put so much on your credit card. Sooner or later, that credit card is gonna max out now where you gonna go?
Peter's broke.
I'm, I'm saying, but where you gonna go? So, so you have to operate within your budget. And you have to operate within your means.
That, that's my point, that, that doesn't have to be.
And if you don't, like I said before, if you don't have the money, you go out and get some.
But, but the thing is, is that to say that the village is broke is not a true statement when there is over $6 million coming into the general fund. What the problem is, is cash management.
But, 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 but right now, cash management is cash management. But we are broke, we don't have, if we weren't broke while we borrowed.
Oh, they mismanaged the money?
No, it's not a matter, okay, that could be one thing, but you have to look at it. You have to look at, you have, you have to, you have to operate within what you have, as I said before. We're gonna go take, I'm not gonna, the meeting is built when you guys.
I'm just gonna, I just say what Joe said. You need somebody that knows about finances and knows what they're doing. If they're running their household like that, where are they going? Because I know that if I have $50 and my gas bill is due, and my child needs shoes, I'm gonna have to decide. And maybe I can, you know, $50 here, $50 there, or whatever, but, or my next check is coming, I can pay this bill and then.
I mean, I wish I had a water fund or, or emergency fund that if I spent all my money, I could go and say, okay. My water fund, or my, if I have a friend, like, I'm, I don't know about everybody that had jobs or whatever, but people borrow money at your job. Can you loan me X amount of money for this, for that? Because people run into, they run into emergency. But you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna pay it back because you're gonna wanna ask them for it again. So everybody has emergencies, I'm not saying that we don't, but it's how you do it. You don't go and, and you borrow money from somebody and you say, I'll pay you, I'll pay you next week. Next week comes, you got another story.
What is the definition of crazy?
You know the definition of crazy. Doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result.
It's, it's not crazy.
Well, I'm not, I'm.
Same thing over and over.
Only, only thing I stated, and this is what I hold true, is we have to find alternative ways to get money.
Stop doing this crazy.
I, I mean, you're doing what you're doing to make, you, you have payroll. I'm not gonna augment payroll. I'm never gonna vote against that. If we have to go out there and stop whatever, I believe in making sure that you work for the village, that you get paid. All of us have a job. I don't want you to get to a point where, we don't have money this month, so, this week, so I can't pay you. I'll never want that to happen. If we have to beg, borrow, steal, or get cracked, pay prices, I wanna pay payroll because those people go to job, go to work.
Right, you, you need somebody that knows about.
So, so did you contact the finance director today to locate a borrow money to make payroll today?
I didn't even know that happened.
Yeah, there was an email that went out.
No, I didn't even, to tell you the truth, um, Debbie, I didn't even know that we had. When you said that just then, I looked at you like, really? Because I didn't even know that we had, that we, we should've, all due respect, we should've knew about this yesterday.
Well, you know what, maybe so, I'm just saying. What is the alternative when bills need to get paid? We have to pay these.
The alternative is to let us know ahead of time. You know that your money is due whatever day. Don't wait to that day, hoping that I'm gonna get some money. Your backup plan should be that. What you should do is bring it to the people, the ones that are in charge or your, your board. Let them know that unless we get some money by this date, we would have to use an alternative means. And if we have to use an alternative means, do you have a problem with us taking from this fund? That's how.
It's been discussed before.
That's, that's how you do that, that's called transparency. But to do that, and yes, we're supposed to pay payroll, but you still should at least let your board know what's going on, that you don't have, that if the money doesn't come in by such and such a date, that we would have to use Plan B, which means have to take it from another source. But right now, as of right now, we don't have money to pay payroll. And we hoping that you're okay this ahead of time. That's how you do that. Not waiting and go ahead and do it at the last minute. Why is everybody raising their hand now, it's nine o'clock? Every time you. Okay, Ms. Erin, is it y'all like, it, it, go ahead.
Yes, now, I'm gonna just say one thing. Yesterday, I heard the mayor tell me personally that he got the lights that he's put, that they're putting into the village through a grant. And he had a certain amount of time to put that in. Now, if he knows about a grant such as that, why does he not know about a whole bunch of grants?
That grant was brought before the village to a company. The company that, as a matter of fact, is putting the lights in is the one that went out and got the grant. Basically, they, so, so they're trying to sell their product and they found a way for you, for you to pay, basically what we were paying anyway for our lights, they provided that service. They didn't go out and do anything, they have the lights, they have the equipment, they wanted to sell it to the village and it showed you a way that they didn't have to, that you didn't have to pay for it through this grant. They brought that, you know, it was, it was that, that's how we got the lights.
Okay, but why do they have to have somebody tell them that?
No, no, they brought this to us.
Okay, I understand that, but grants, there are grants out there.
Yes, there are.
Tons of them.
But you, but you have to know where, just like when you go to college.
Right.
If you have certain, there's certain grants, but you have to know where, so that's why, you get what you paid for in life. If you're gonna pay somebody, then yeah.
We had, I had a company I worked for, there was an individual that did nothing but grants.
Okay.
That's all that person did.
And there's people out there right now that are grant writers.
Yes.
Not, not pretend, but they're grant writers, but they work on commission.
Yes. Now, my other question, one more is to Mr. Hookes. He tells me and everyone here that we need to shop in the village. Now, I have an issue. I don't have an issue with you guys. But I have an issue with Fairman. I buy English muffins that I pretty much have every morning. They're baked English muffins, they're in that cool section. I go pick them up, I look at the dates, because it terrifies me what I see half the time. Those English muffins were expired since November. This is already February, finally get the guy to do that. You think I'm gonna pick up those three and hope they're not? And I've seen them spoiled. There was mold on some of them. Why are they doing that? Why is the board a hell coming after them?
First of all, as you stated, you went there and you saw it? Did you tell?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so.
Because that's a, you know why? Because it's a pattern routine.
That's why those muffins or whatever were there. Because no one said.
Nobody's gonna pick them.
No, nobody said anything. Now, now, if somebody does finally make, make that decision and call the health department, they will come in, but you have to, you have to, it's not gonna happen by itself.
I'll be honest with you. I shop there selectively.
A lot of people do.
I do not pick up a lot of their produce because it's frozen and it's thawed out, and celery is limp. They want a $1.89 for the celery that looks like a noodle? And you want me, you want me to shop there? And hopefully poison my grandkids and myself and my husband? No, I go to Indiana, I go to Costco, I go to Chicago Heights Food For Less and other stores. Why would I shop there? Occasionally, I have to, but I look at everything like a detective. Because it scares the hell out of me there.
It's, it's Burgess just kept saying, you talking to me, talk to the manager of the store. Because if it was my store or something like that, you come to me, I would do something about it.
But why, why, why isn't anybody here in the village checking on these people that we as customers have to do that all the time? Why isn't that a routine thing to do?
That part, as far as policing their food and stuff like that, that's the health department. You have to consume, make that phone call.
Well, trust me, I will do that. I've done it to Dollar General. I've done it to them, I called the district manager on their horrible way that they treat people there, as well as leaving stuff in the aisles where you could trip on it. It's been semi-taken care of.
Don't talk to the managers and stuff at the store.
No, I got the district manager.
I went in there and bought, or tried to buy some frozen boxes of spinach, and I reached for it and it ran out my arm.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
It had thawed. I took that directly to the manager, who thanked me for bringing it in and handed me some paper towel, and I wiped my arm. And as I turned my basket to go away, he put it back in the freezer.
That's right, that's him, I know him.
Put it right back. I told him.
I know the individual.
I told him, you got a problem with your freezer, it's not freezing, it's defrosting, some, you know, all this food is thawed. And he put it right back in there.
Yeah, he didn't talk to me for a long time. Because I reported him.
Supposed to be writing grants for us, Fairman's assistant, isn't that one of his duties?
No. No, his, his duty is, okay, Fairman's assistant works for Fairman.
So, isn't he supposed to write grants?
No, I mean, he does what Fairman tell, he's, he's, he works for Fairman LLC. He doesn't work specifically for the village. Fairman hired him to do whatever he needed him to do. He's not a officer or a employee of the village like that, no. He's paid from Fairman's LLC.
Uh, two questions, and being that it's an open meeting, um, I, I do have to say it's nothing against you, Derek. You're a board member and I'm pleased to come to your, your meetings for information. Does the board and the back office, doesn't everybody up there know what payroll is? And doesn't everybody know when? No, I, I, I mean this seriously.
Go ahead.
Do we?
Do, does everybody?
Me too. Do we have a separate payroll for office? Then, I know it's broke down on.
Payroll comes out of general, general fund.
Okay, but, um, do we have a separate day that the office people are paid as opposed to the policemen?
But it's, it's different every month because every month they get paid on a certain day, so therefore it fluctuates. I wouldn't know when payroll is because I, 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 I'm not part of payroll.
No, but you're a board member.
Right, but I don't know when payroll is due. No, I don't have that, that, I could probably get that information.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'm not.
But you're telling, you're telling Debbie, you know this is coming up. Aren't you, as a trustee?
No, no, I said.
Knowing that it's coming up also, and why don't you go and say, hey, we got money coming out?
That's why you have your finance chairman, you have your finance director.
Which is.
He knows, that's Mohan, Mohan, Mohan knows when payroll is due.
Okay, then Mohan only speaks up every two weeks and all he does is present the bill and say it was paid, sign it? Is this what's going on now?
No, I mean, Mohan knows when payroll was due. So he knows how much money we have or don't have in the bank to pay payroll. He knew that last week. Yesterday, he could've made the statement that payroll was due this Friday, which means if payroll was due Friday, the money has to be in by Wednesday.
Yes, Debbie.
Because most people that have, that have direct deposit get there as a day ahead of time. So if that money's not in by Wednesday, it has happened to us once. That money's not in by Wednesday, then those people that get direct deposit won't get their direct deposit tomorrow. They gotta be given a hand check. So that money has to be in by, but if you knew Tuesday that the money's not there, why not bring it up and say, hey, we don't have money for payroll, we gotta borrow from this fund? What's the pleasure of this board? Can I get a consensus? Can I get something?
Now, is it the whole amount of payroll or is it just?
Oh, I don't know how, I don't know how much, I have no idea how much we're short. If that's what you're trying to say?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know.
Is it like a shortage?
I don't, I don't have anything to do with the payroll department. My question really was not about payroll. My question was that, what is the alternative when payroll needs to be met not tomorrow? That was my question. I have nothing to do with the finance department.
Well, I'm not trying to put on you.
My question is whether the trustees know that payroll, just like the finance director and the mayor know, the trustees know that payroll needs to be met. Bills need to be paid, light bills need to be paid. All these other bills need to be paid. What is the alternative if we don't have the money?
Yes, I got your question.
That was my question.
Okay.
Okay, regardless of what it's being used for, money has to come from somewhere.
Right, I understand that, thank you. My other problematic question is, a year, year and a half ago, someone, and I have one more comment after this. Someone had hired, and I'm guessing it's the mayor alone, had hired some kind of company to make an ad about the village to bring property owners in. And it was so grossly exaggerated. All they did was show the expensive houses, and I'm sorry, I don't know where you live exactly, I've never been to your house, but there are some very nice houses in the village, but that's not the majority of our homes. That was done, apparently, to try and bring folks to the village. That was ridiculously done, but it was an attempt.
And that was also free, Ms. Clark, just, I don't mean to cut you off. There was no charge for that. That business came and promoted, tried to promote the village for us. There was no charge to the village for that.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
I really am.
Thanks for bringing that up though.
Good. Um, also, is there no possibility that the colleges, Prairie State, um, governors, that there could be any young people that can look for grants for the village? Just like when I was on housing, we had a lady named Sharon. Yes, and she found grants. And it was no charge to the village. She worked as, for her schooling, or she worked for her advancement. It's just a suggestion. That's all I have.
Okay, because you have one more. But, um, as far as that's concerned, yes, there's students out there that are looking for credit that we can go to the colleges and talk to professors and say, hey, do you have someone here in the business department? In other words, in the colleges' business department. But you got to understand grants. I can actually go out and get you a grant that's a matching grant. We may not be able to afford, I can go out and get you a million-dollar grant, matching. Now, I gotta put up a million dollars to get that grant. Do I have that kind of money? So that's what you, that's what you have to think about when you get grants. But there are grants, there's a lot of grants out there, a lot of them. But I like the fact that I'm going to a professional because they already know. Yes, but you get what you paid for. You get what you paid for. You get what you pay, who, okay, you.
I, I have, I have one.
Okay.
One comment. I work for a $109 billion company. And they made, oh, excuse me, they made over $731 million profit last year. This year, they said, hold up, wait a minute, we gotta get rid of some people. We didn't make a billion dollar in profit. So, if you know what your projections are, there's no such thing as being short in payroll. That is what a budget is for. So if we can't get the simple concept of add and subtract leaves a remainder, we're in trouble. There is nothing to do. You have to operate within your means. If you got a mortgage payment at $3,000 a month, but you spend $5,000 on your luxury cars, you gotta get out. Those people are coming for their houses. So I don't understand how, uh, six, how much you said this, this village generates a year? How much? $6 million. And you can't figure out that you have infrastructure that you have to upkeep? You have employees that you have to upkeep? How in the hell do you get short in payroll? If I was an employee, I'd be mad as hell. You didn't figure this out before I got here? You got me coming out here every day and I'm wishing every Friday I'm gonna get paid. That does not make sense to me, and you all, as trustees, allowing this person to do that. I understand the concept of four is greater than three, but you all should be screaming to the high heavens that this is not right. So I, I don't accept that, oh, he's got four, he is three to three and he breaks the top. There's something wrong personally when people cannot add and subtract and know that they don't have any money left. It should not be a damn surprise every week, a week, how we gonna make payroll? What the hell is that? You got too many employees, then you gotta cut back. If you don't have enough money, uh, too many people left the village, got their sales signs or abandonment up there, then you gotta cut back. You steadily, constantly going saying that we're gonna knock down houses, uh, we got about three hundred, uh, three hundred and some odd people that, that, uh, renovating homes, where's the income and the revenue to support that? Where is the tax money to support that? It's not what you have, it's what you can prove, and they can't prove none of it. Sorry, I invested in this town and I've lost my shirt. I am pissed off to the high heavens. And it's about time that you talk to all five of the trustees, tell them to get their shit together. I'm sorry, it's on. Take, but it's time for you all, you had four years into this and you still can't get it right. Okay? What business have you brought into this village? This is not your job. Those that put on the big boy pants and sit in that front seat, that's who is supposed to bring the businesses in here. If it was a trustee that's supposed to send, uh, bring the business in here, then give them that job to bring it in here and lead those trustees along. You're trying to micro-hat it, you can't even spend, you can't even subtract dollars and cents and know that you don't even have payroll from one day to the next day. It's a surprise to you every day and week that we don't have money to pay our people.
Yeah, where is the money?
Where is the money? That's the only thing there is, there is nothing else. And don't, don't hang your head. Cause I tell you this every night, don't hang your head. You wanna be in this mess and you see these people every Tuesday? This is serious business, this is my money, this is what I've worked my life for. I chose to come to this raggedy ass town, and now that I'm here, I want it better. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, so people that have never had nothing in their life, never will be nothing in their life, and they're telling you what you can and cannot have, I'm fed up. So I don't know about the rest of the, the citizens here, but I am fed up with it.
Me too.
And I know how much is two plus two? So why would you hire the, uh, police chief? Number one. Number two, why is a lawyer here anyway? I don't remember him being here years ago, and he's not allowed to answer questions anyway unless the mayor says he can. So what is he here for? Why are we paying him?
Like I stated before, you know, I think it should be gone after the first hour, after the public comment.
He shouldn't even be here, he's not answering questions.
Well, but sometimes you have to have him, just in case something is legal, that somebody attempts to answer a question, you can say, you know, the lawyer's there to make sure that you don't say certain things, because you can be held allowed. But, you know.
Well, I mean, they can sit down and fowl it like they do all the time anyway.
Yeah, you can put him on, yeah, that has happened where you can call him up, absolutely. I see people are leaving, so Judy has one more thing to say, I think we'll wrap it up at this point.
You know, I, I think Debbie is right in, in how she's trying to say that. What do you do? I think we don't have the money. So other than switch him from Peter to Pay Paul, how do you meet these bills?
You're playing right back.
But then again, we go back to what somebody else said about the police chief and what have you. If you don't work within your means, you can't possibly continue to do what this village is doing. When you can't set your own personal feelings aside and work with what you have, you shouldn't be our leader. He was asked to swallow your pride and put somebody in a position until you could meet what you want. And he couldn't do that. He had to have the administrator, public safety officer, and the police chief. We had a police chief that already, or a deputy chief that was already getting the benefits and a pay. All they had to do was have her elected to make her temporary chief, acting chief, whatever they wanna call her, until you could see daylight and get what you want. That was absolutely not. His personal feelings came first. That's why we're at, where we're at today. The spending of money before looking that, hey, Friday's payday and we don't have the money. None of that came out yesterday while the auditors were here. It absolutely should've been brought out. And I think maybe we should start asking the question, do we have the money to pay the payroll next?
That makes sense.
Why does the finance director bring that?
The finance director was here yesterday, I don't know, I find that out, cause I don't understand. But I, but I just wanna say this, and, um, um, it was tonight, I think it was spirited, but the powers that be don't want this to happen. They don't want us to be in here because, I don't know, we're nasty or got somebody running up and down the aisles or whatever the case may be. But for, and this is something that I feel strongly about, I think these meetings are informative. You get a chance to speak, you get a chance to, um, say what you have to say, even though my wife, um, kinda went in a different direction. But she, but she had a chance to speak her mind, cause she does work each and every day. And she pays exorbitant amount, we do pay a lot of taxes. I just don't say anything, but we do. So, and each and every person here pays taxes. So you should have a chance, but to limit and to shift this room down to us, I think it's a travesty. And I think that there's something wrong, because, and I'm glad this is on tape or whatever, I think there's something wrong when you try to quiet the residents that come out here for a reason. You guys took your time to come out here, to be involved, to speak your mind, to, to say what you have to say in an environment where you don't have to have the police, you don't have to have somebody escort you out, you don't have to get, you know, talked at. You get a chance to say what you wanna say, um, and speak your mind. There's nothing wrong with that, that's what government is about. They give you that choice. This is not a dictatorship, even though it's trying to be ran like one. There shouldn't be locks on the doors, there shouldn't be trying to augment people from coming out using their First Amendment right to speak how they want. Now, yes, we're gonna keep belligerent down, so we don't want people to be belligerent, but outside of that, this is what you pay your ta, you pay taxes. If you don't want to hear what a resident got to do, don't run for office. Don't be an elected official, sit out there in the audience and let somebody else do it. So you gotta take criticism, like I stated at the beginning, you have to take criticism, just like anything else. And you're supposed to learn from criticism. And I'm hoping that we do that. I'm gonna continue to fight that we can, so we can have these meetings, so you can come out and speak. And, you know, I don't care if people try to say that, you know, making, this is not political. This is opinionated and constructive criticism. With that said, I'd like to say goodnight to everybody, thank you guys for coming out. Next week, next Monday will be the same. Um, third Wednesday of the month, seven o'clock, bring your neighbors out, let them know. And I also like to thank the proprietorship of Popeye. I mean, they've done, like, they've done more than what you think they've done in this village. And for them to be treated a certain way is a travesty. Those are some of the things that we need to do and quit worrying about how many meetings that we're having, who's saying what to where, you know. Patronize, support your businesses, and quit coming up there expecting free food. See, there you go.